Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hello everyone, really glad to be here today.
We are also excited to have Colin here with us. Hey Colin.
How you doing everyone?
Okay, so today we are talking about content and very specifically, we're talking about getting your content sorted out ahead of time. So that you can show up more meaningfully and intentionally in your business. And also just reap the benefits of growth without having to feel like you were just reacting to what you feel like your business might need in the moment, right? So I want to give you the space, especially over the holiday season, over the winter season where we like to kind of be a little bit more cozy and introspective. I want to give you the opportunity to really live into that space. And have your business not suffer as a result of the downtime that you may choose to take. So today is all about planning, about planning the essential content that you want to have in place. As a personal brand, as a brand partner who is out here in the world wanting to get new clients and new customers through digital means, right? Which is what you do here with Get Oiling. If you're new here, welcome. We do this every Thursday at noon US Eastern Time. And this is an opportunity for you to learn really powerful strategies to help you grow your young living business. And how to use the platform that is built for you as a brand partner to get it all done. And that's Get Oiling. If you aren't using us yet, we are a dollar for your first month. Promise you'll love us. Love that we have you guys here today and I hope that you'll bring your team next time. We are going to pop out a video and into the slides that we've prepared today. While we're doing that, go ahead and head over into the chat. Let us know where you're coming in from. Excited to see familiar names here in the list. Let us know what you are up to this month. What do you have planned? Do you have any events coming up that you are, are, are planning to host? Excited to hear more from you guys here today. Now, we did host a special session last month that was all about holiday centric content. So that was really specifically, how can we prepare ourselves for things like Black Friday? And, and the Christmas holidays, New Years, et cetera, right? So everything that's coming up that really can feel like a crunch. Now, we did a dedicated planning session on that. What we're going to be talking about here today is about the entire season of winter, which begins mid-December and runs through into the new year. So December, January, February is what we are talking about here. And right now, as we are in the beginning of November, this gives us plenty of time to start getting the pieces in place. So that we have everything ready to go, easy to work with. So again, we're not reacting to our business as we're moving into, for a lot of us, the busiest season of the year, right? So today, we're going to talk about how we can use a seasonal strategy to stay visible and connected through the winter months. We'll talk about how to batch your winter content using a simple two-phase workflow. And we'll talk about how we can create our blog posts, our emails, our events, and our social posts in one focused sprint. And of course, as always, we'll get into some live help and Q and A as you guys need it. So if you have questions right now or throughout the call, whether they're about today's topic or not, please do go ahead and add those to the Q and A here on Zoom so that we don't miss them. The chat can get a little busy. If you'd like to join us on a future call like this and you're watching this as a replay, please do come join us. We've got an incredible community of brand partners from all over the world who use Get Oiling and share what's working for them. And of course, you can learn something new every week, getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. And on these calls, you have an opportunity every week to work together. So if you would like to have my hands on the work that you're doing, or if you want some troubleshooting on something that you're stuck on, if you want a little help getting started, if you're new to any of this, this is a great opportunity. And if you go to getoiling.com/web site review, you can reserve space in the second half of one of these upcoming calls to work together live on whatever you choose in your Get Oiling system and it's totally free for you. But if you would like to hand off your projects to our team, that's also a fantastic option. We've got incredibly talented and capable experts in copywriting and design. And in just generally setting up systems in Get Oiling and our team can help you with just about anything you can imagine. So head over there if you would like to have some of the work done for you. All right, so I want to draw our attention here to the big strategy, right? Our, our big picture of what we're trying to do. With content as brand partners, we want to release a system that looks about like this every month. Now, if you take a step back and you look at the big brands that you follow, there's a pretty solid chance that what they're doing looks almost identical to this, right? And the system is this, we have content and, and the anchor content that I'll be talking about here today. Our blog posts, and those are things that benefit your business, not just the week that you publish them, but also for many, many weeks and possibly years and years to come. These are opportunities for you to then email your list, right? So you are building a list of subscribers. Not everybody is interested in coming to a class, learning about Young Living, making a purchase yet, but if we can try to stay top of mind with those people, then over time, they remember and continue to remember that we're the person who can help them with what it is that they want to have figured out, right? And we can use that email list to promote things like our next event or a social post that we put out that's getting some engagement, maybe a conversation you want to start on social. And of course, sending them to our blog post content. All roads lead to a consult or a live event where you can sign up a new customer, right? So really, all this is, is sort of a web that we're creating. We're spinning this web of content that allow people who are ready right now to make their way to us and become customers. But for those who are not ready yet to be in this web where they are continually exposed to our message, our solutions, and our invitations to move forward, right? So all we want to do is put this stuff out on a consistent basis, consistency being the key point here. On a consistent basis, so that people remember who we are, for what we do, who we're about, who we serve. And when they are ready, they will convert, right? So that's the whole goal. That's what we're going over here today. Now, when we're talking about content, this is really, really important. What I'm talking about here today is not how you educate your customers. This is not about product education. This is certainly not about you going to your list or your followers and teaching them all the benefits of thieves, right? This is not about product education because that might feel gratifying in the short term. It does not grow your business in the long term though, right? So this is about connecting to what your audience needs and feels right now, right? In this season, at this time, when routines are slowing down and people are craving restoration and connection. That's how we're feeling and interacting in the winter months, right? The goal here is not to throw product in people's faces and to say, here's what solves your problem, but to open conversations that are relevant to how they're feeling, what they're thinking, what they feel like they need in that moment. And having those conversations lead, sometimes literal conversations, sometimes your content is the conversation toward the opportunity to purchase and become your next loyalty customer. So what this means is that we're talking in our content about rest and reflection in the winter months, not just sleep blends, right? We're talking about immune support and comfort and not just thieves. We're talking about warmth, gratitude, togetherness, not just diffusers, right? We're not talking about product. We're talking about things that open the opportunity for product to become a discussion, right? So mentioning products, I should say here, it is okay to mention them, but don't lead with them, right? So if it just makes the most obvious sense, if you're talking about a particular concept or topic, and it would not make sense for you to do anything other than mention an essential oil, then by, by all means, include that in your post. Ideally, a blog post or in an email, but don't, don't make your content about product. Because that will shut people out. People will begin to equate you with being the person that sells Young Living. And that means that they aren't going to come to you unless they want to buy Young Living. And if they don't know enough about Young Living to want it, they are going to write you off. Let, let me know that that makes sense in the chat, right? If you become known to the people that know you as the person that sells Young Living, they will tune you out because they don't yet know what Young Living could do for them, right? And so our content really needs to be about meeting people where they are so that we can begin conversations with them that lead toward them realizing that Young Living is the solution, right? So products can come up in context, but they should not be the focus. So this approach, if we follow it faithfully and consistently, is going to help you grow a loyal and engaged following during your quieter months of the year. It'll keep your community connected even when they're less active online and help you to build trust through stories, rituals, and practical wellness support through the winter. Creating evergreen content that nurtures while you recharge. So this is content that again, a post that you make today on your blog could serve you with free leads for your business, years and years and years into the future. So what we're doing right now is planting a garden and, and, and that's what we're doing with blog posts. We're planting seeds, right? And what we're doing with our social content is we're watering those, right? With our emails that we're sending out is we're, we're kind of pulling people in toward these opportunities to connect. And, and then of course, here we're able to initiate those deeper conversations that lead to lasting customers and shares, not just a sale, right? And that's really important at the end of the, the day too. If you become known as the person who sells, sells Young Living, people will have a transactional relationship with you. Meaning they say, oh yeah, you know what? I heard about that lavender essential oil. I'm going to go buy it from my friend. You can't really have a deeper conversation at that point about all of the other things that they should be adding to their cart, right? Or at least it's a lot more difficult to start and have that conversation successfully. However, if we are talking about solutions to problems that are relevant to them right now and we're meeting them where they are in these conversations, then we can sit down and make a very strong case for a 300 plus PV order that they can buy on repeat and they can become a lasting customer, not just somebody who grabs a thing because they remember that you're the one that sells it, right? So let's break this down into two simple phases. We are going to use a checklist that we've provided to you via email. We'll share the link here in the chat in just a moment. And of course, it will be in the description of the YouTube video here. Once we have this published later today, so let me, um. Here we go. Come to this blog post here and I'll go ahead and pop this into the chat. Just in case anybody didn't receive this, this would have gone out to you guys via email earlier today. If you're on our list, go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. If you are not, and make sure you are getting these. All right, so today you can use this as a reference. But what I want to point your attention to is this nice big red button down here that has the Plan Publish Grow checklist, all right? So this checklist is what you can use. It's going to be basically identical to what you've used before. If you followed the system previously, essentially what we are doing here is we are planning ahead for that big picture, for all of those pieces of content that we want to have in place. Actually, let me, let me go right back here and, and show you this one more time. This is the entirety of what we're creating at the end of the day. We are going to decide on a live event per month. We are going to have one blog post that we release per week. So this would be four posts or it could be five if there are five, depending on the day of the week that you publish. So maybe there's five Mondays in a month. If you publish on Mondays, sometimes there's five, there's usually four. So we're going to have a live event per month, a blog post per week, an email that goes out to our list per week. And then roughly on a daily basis, we're going to post once or more, obviously depending on how active you want to be, right? And at, in all of these cases, the goal is to take people to the blog post, which is going to talk about getting on a consult with us. The emails will talk about the blog post. They'll also promote the events that you're hosting. And then of course, you get to share at your events. And, and of course, from those events, you may choose to have consults after, or you may choose to sign people up right there at the event, right? Totally up to you. So that's really what we are looking to accomplish with this list here. So the first phase is planning. The second phase is publishing. Now, the planning phase is taking place in Trello. Now, if you are not familiar with, or you want a refresher on the system, I do have a link right here where you can see our entire swipe file system. You can get access to the checklist that gives you access to a template in Trello that you can use. This, this template here is one that you can actually copy straight into your own Trello account free. By the way, you don't have to pay for, for Trello. It is a third-party service. I highly recommend it for organization purposes. But yeah, if you want to get started with that, you can, you can actually click the link that's right here in the checklist. So the first thing that we're going to do is, is use Write With AI and Get Oiling or just our own creativity to come up with some monthly themes that connect with the challenges, the interests, the goals that your audience might have for that month. So some examples I've provided here for December, you might choose rest and reflection, how to simplify during a busy season. For January, we'll reset and renew energy clarity and focus. For February, we will use connection and heart health for self-care and relationships. And the prompt that we will use, just as an example here, and I'll actually go ahead and open up the Write With AI and Get Oiling and we can give this a shot. I'm going to say provide three monthly content themes for winter that help my audience stay balanced, warm, and connected without talking directly about products. I'm going to copy this prompt and pop it right, oops, I'm going to pop it right in here. Typing the wrong, using the wrong keyboard shortcut. So I'm going to paste this here. Now, real quick, if you don't have your AI settings adjusted, this is not going to be a sufficient prompt. Do make sure that you go over to your AI settings in Get Oiling and make sure that you tell the AI, you know, what kind of what your focus is, who your people are, how you serve them, et cetera. We do have a full training on this, by the way. If you go over to our blog and you search for AI, oops, let me see, Write With AI. I'll see if I can come up with something there. Here we go. This is how to train AI to grow your young living business. This, which I will also put into the chat as well. This is going to give you a complete guide to making sure that your AI settings are set up appropriately, right? So making sure that, that AI has a good understanding of who you are and what you're about. So you can go in here and say, I want you to provide three monthly content themes. And when it comes back with those themes, it's going to give you exactly what you need. So I'm going to go ahead and click write. Now, the background that I gave Write With AI is that I am, I'm focused on low tox and no tox living. So this is a very green focused. I think it's also moms. So here, let's just go ahead and come down here and see what came, what it came up with. So we've got cozy home retreat. The theme focus is creating a warm and inviting home environment during the cold months. Topics are simple swaps for reducing home toxins while decorating for warmth. Tips on using natural elements to enhance coziness, DIY, DIY projects to personalize your space. Excellent. Okay, so I'm going to copy this to clipboard and I'm just going to go ahead and open a notes app on my device just so that I can just keep this for, for copying and pasting into AI later. So I'm just going to drop that. You, I don't think you need to see it. I just imagine opening like a Google Doc or something and you're pasting this in is what I'm doing. All right, so this is the first thing that I'm doing here. This is our step one. We're going to choose a theme for each month of the season. So we've got cozy home retreat. We've got winter wellness rituals and connection and reflection. Excellent. So I'm going to then go in here to use my themes to plan a monthly live event. So we're going to go back to Write With AI to generate an idea per month with our winter themes. And then we're going to pop those into our Trello. So I'm going to go ahead and grab this prompt here as well. So I'm going to copy this, come back over to my Write With AI and I'm going to paste this here. And I'll say, here are the themes. And then I can just come and copy what's here. Let me see if I can. There we go. Just going to copy all of it and delete what I don't need. So here we go. Paste. I'll drag this down so we can see all of it. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and have it write. And while it's writing, I'm actually going to come over here and show you guys what the Trello board looks like. Now, this is going to look a little bit different than the one that you claim. You can do things like change the background. You can add all kinds of fun stuff to it. The first thing that we're actually going to be doing is, is actually setting up what our events are going to be. So I've named this workshops here in this list. And I do have some holiday ones coming up. So I've got a holiday event coming up for November and I've got one for December. But I'm going to go ahead and add a couple others that are not holiday centric, that are seasonal, just in keeping with what we're doing here today. So coming back over here to Get Oiling, let's see what it came up with. All right, we've got, oh, this needs to be, I need to specify what's here a bit more for December through February. All right, so it actually wasn't, wasn't quite understanding the months that I needed it for. And yes, Adrian, this is very similar to what we're doing in Momentum. That's right. So I'm going to copy this to the clipboard so I can pop this in to my other file that I'm using just to, to capture everything. And so I'm going to start with this December event here and I'm going to come back over to Trello. And I am going to start building out a card here in my workshops list. And this one is going to be, I'm just going to click add card and this is going to be cozy home retreat. And I'm going to open that up. And I'm just going to copy everything that it gave me and put it into the description here and hit save. Right? So here it is cozy home retreat, event title, topic, call to action. Perfect. So that's a good starting point. I can go ahead and do this for the other events as well. So this one is called Winter Wellness Rituals. And the other one is called Connection and Reflection. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and again, do the same. I'm going to grab what it gave me for January. I'm going to pop that description in here and save it. And I'm going to do the same thing for February. Now, another thing that we want to go ahead and do while we are working on these events is we want to go ahead and assign dates for these, right? So I believe the examples I gave, I've got December 10th, January 14th, and February 11th. So I am going to go ahead and set those up here. So this is going to be, oops, wrong one. All right, this is going to be December 10th. I'll add that date. And this gives me plenty of time to, to get this done. What was the date for this one? 14th and then the 11th. And again, it's just as easy as setting this up. We'll go ahead and put the date in there for, there we go. There's that one. Great. Now let's return back here to our checklist and see what else we need to do. We have, let me see, we've got a title, we've got a date. Excellent. We've got a Trello card for each. All right. The next thing that we can plan to do is our weekly blog post. So again, we're going to use Write With AI to generate some working titles and topic ideas for one blog post per week that align with our theme. We're going to add one card per week based on our publishing day to that long form content list on Trello. And then we'll use a working blog post title and any other ideas for the post as well as a date that reflects when the post will be published. And then we'll repeat that for the remaining months of the season, all right? So I am going to grab this prompt here and use this to build out my planning for my blog post. So coming back over here to our, to Get Oiling and using this file that I have open where I've pasted everything that AI has already given me, I'm going to paste in this prompt here. All right, so for every, I'm going to say Monday in December. Let's see, the theme is cozy home retreat. And I'm going to save the theme below. Here is the theme. And I'm, I'm going to specify as well to do not provide blog post copy, only the, let me see. Only the titles and descriptions. Okay, and I did that because I've told Write With AI to use code for output, which is a little bit advanced. We've talked about this in some of our other trainings, but I don't want it to actually give me an entire blog post right now. So here we go. We've got, um, perfect structured one idea per Monday. Excellent. So I can go ahead and grab all of these by using this copy to clipboard feature here. I'm going to go paste this in to my working document that I'm using. And now I can come over to Trello and complete the process, right? Because what we need to do now is to, is to actually go in and create one card per week, add a blog post title and any other additional information about it, as well as the date that it will be published. And so, yeah, we can go over to Trello and get that done now. You guys are seeing that this really is, this planning part of the process is actually pretty quick and simple. So I'm going to go ahead and use my long form content template. So this can be for blog posts. This will be also for things like YouTube videos. If you want to do those instead of writing long form blog posts, could also be for podcasts, if you want to get into podcasting. So our blog title here is going to be simple swaps for a low tox cozy home this winter. I'm going to go ahead and create that card. There it is. The date for this, I'm going to go ahead and apply as well because this is established. So this is going to go out on December, well, that's December 4th is, is not a Monday in 2025, but that's okay. We're going to put it out here on the first. And I'm going to go and grab the description and the suggested meta description that it gave me. And just, I'm just going to capture everything here because the, really the goal of what we're doing first is just capturing, right? We're capturing and organizing, then we'll come back in our, in our publishing in our second phase of this process to actually start using what's here to develop the blog posts themselves, right? So I'll do this one more time, just so we're super clear on how this is done. Again, this one is called natural elements for a lowzy co-ta, low tox living space. There we go. Say that five times fast. So I've got that one here. I can give it a date as well. There we go. Save. And I can go here and copy what the AI gave me, grab that in right there, hit save, call it a day, right? So this is what you're, really all we're doing at this point is we are capturing, we're planning and we're putting everything into a place where it's organized, all right? Our weekly emails are going to be used to talk about the blog post and to talk about any upcoming events that we have, right? So I'm going to go ahead and just use December for this purpose. And I'm going to grab this prompt right here. And I'm going to come back over here to Write With AI and I'm going to read this out for you guys. And planning weekly emails for the month of December 2025 to be sent each Monday. I'm going to send out the emails when my blog posts publish. Each email will promote that week's blog post and also reference the next upcoming event based on the dates below. And then I will put the blog post information in here first. And so I'm just going to go and grab all of my blog posts. And again, I'm just copying this from that other output that it gave me. There we go. And then here are the events. And again, I have these already here. And so I'm going to pop those in right here. Paste. All right, so now I'm asking it to suggest a curiosity-driven subject line and brief content outline for each email, making sure the event promotion matches the timeline. Click write and let it come up with what it needs to come up with. Now, once this is done, I will then be able to pop this information over into this working document so that I can go and just like I did before, put this information into the Trello board, except this time it's going to be in our email ideas. So here, I'm going to use our email ideas template. I'm going to come over to my Write With AI and copy what it's given me. I'm going to pop it in. I know you can't see this, but you saw me do this with the blog posts. And just over here on my Trello board, my first email is going to be, and I'm just going to make sure that this is titled for the day of the week. So this is Monday, December 4. I'm going to go ahead and make sure that that has, obviously Monday, December 4th is not correct. I'm working, I think AI thinks that I'm talking about 2026, but I don't have time to go back and correct for you guys today. So I've got a subject outline. I've got a content outline, quick tip, blog promotion, call to action. I love what this has done for me. I'm just going to put all of that here in the description. It's really, it's done 80% of the work for me because I gave it everything. It knows what the blog is about. It knows what events I have coming up. And see, you can see, here's the, the upcoming events. And, and, and I even know, give it the AI settings, the links that, that they need as well. So this is a starting point, which is great. And I can repeat this for the other emails of the month of December. And just like I did for my, all my blog content for December, I can repeat that for January, repeat that for February and do that for these emails as well. Again, all we're doing in this planning phase is collecting ideas and planning on what we will do, right? Now, the final piece of planning is going to be our social posts. Now, the final piece of planning uh, is going to be our social posts. And here we are going to uh, really just kind of cycle through different types of uh, of social posts that we could use. So these would be posts that are curiosity uh, driven about maybe why they should go read our blog post or join our event. Uh, maybe they are engagement driven, which is what I would recommend majority of the time. Uh, you also can have posts that are um, maybe pushing towards your lead magnet to your weekly wellness tips, et cetera, right? Uh, so what I would do here is just simply use this example prompt that I've provided for you. I'd go back over to our Write with AI and get oiling. And here we go, I would actually put in uh, all of the blog information, all of the event information, the monthly theme. So all of these are things that we've already collected, right? So you're just going to be modifying what's here in this prompt. Again, providing it with all of that voluminous information that AI has already worked out for us, what we're gonna be talking about, what the event is, when the event is, et cetera. And this is essentially going to, once you have this all modified, give you a content calendar for your social media, right? And then once you have all of those ideas in place, and remember, we're not creating the posts right now, we're simply coming over to our social media posts here. And we are creating a card and we are putting a uh, we're gonna call this event promo December 1st, right? And I'm gonna go in here and paste exactly what it gave me for that day, right? This is something that is going to take a little bit of time, uh, just because you know, it, it is going to be a lot of posts. But I would encourage you really at this, at the planning stage, to not get too bogged down in the details. And just basically make sure that what you have here in the description is something that is um, relevant to the things that are time sensitive. Because, and, and this is the really important thing about social media, right? What you have with your brand is, is a business, right? You have um, to, to liken it to a brick and mortar, you've got a bakery that sells amazing cakes. Now, if you just happen to be able to afford or have a location that is downtown where there's tons of foot traffic and people can smell what you're baking, you've got an opportunity for people to walk by and say, ooh, what's that, right? Well, social media is your opportunity to do that, right? Uh, so you showing up consistently on social media is the wafting of that beautiful scent of baked goods, right? The scent of these oils. Uh, but if we don't use social media, we are, you know, essentially putting our bakery on the edge of town and just hoping that people realize that we're there, right? Uh, so this does really warrant the effort that goes into it. Do make sure uh, that you do this. And uh, and remember, in this planning stage of the process, it really is just about making sure that you're capturing the gist of what needs to be done. Because there are incredible tools that you can use, especially if you use something like Canva to spin out content that you want. Uh, so long as you give it the exact information that you know it needs to include. So um, you need to make sure if this is a, a promo piece, that you are copying in uh, your, uh, let me actually go grab my uh, my event here, uh, my information here, just to make sure that this is included when I go to create the um, when I go to create the post later, right? Just make sure that the important stuff that needs to be there is there, right? Uh, and so you're gonna repeat that for everything. I would say um, as, like from a planning perspective, go ahead and plan on all of the workshops in one go. And I would even plan out all of the quarter, like, you know, the entire season. It's not the quarter, it's a season. All of the season's blog posts as well. But for the social media post, because there's a lot of them to do, I would consider maybe doing this uh, one month at a time, right? Uh, and obviously the farthest ahead you can work on this, the better off you'll be. Uh, but this is really the thing that you need to be engaging with on a daily basis anyway, because it is essentially the town square where you're going to be able to get people to see you, what you're doing, and help to move them off the platform to where you can start leading those conversations that you really wanna have. Alright, so come back over here to our checklist and let's get into publishing. Now, publishing in Get Oiling is pretty simple and straightforward if we've done all of our planning first, right? So the first thing we need to do is make sure that we have created a Zoom link and we've got an event description, right? Uh, so the first thing we're gonna do is move our little card in Trello over to our drafts in progress, right? So it's time for me to start working on this cozy home retreat event. So I'm gonna pop that over here. Right? So I'm gonna be working on that first. The next thing that I need to do is uh, make sure that I have a, a link for this meeting. So a recurring Zoom meeting or one per the event. And then we're gonna use Write with AI to write our event description. Uh, we are not going to um, have the date uh, for the Zoom and everything in the description because this is gonna be displayed on the page where it's also, it's, it's gonna be published already. It would be redundant. Um, and then we're gonna add the descriptions to the Trello card for each event. So what we'll do here, here's my exam, uh, example prompt here. I'm gonna come down here, copy this, head over here to Get Oiling and I'm gonna say, write a short, clear event description that encourages RSVPs for a one hour Zoom workshop on uh, the event below is what I'm gonna say here. Focus on value relevance and what attendees will walk away with without repeating the event title. So here is my December event. I'm gonna copy from my working document over here. I'm gonna click write. And what this produces for me, I'm gonna take over to Trello and I'm gonna repeat this process. Well, if you're doing this on your own, I would repeat this process for uh, for all of the other events, right? So coming right back over here to our Trello board. And the importance of putting this stuff into Trello boards in, instead of just going straight to get oiling uh, is that I want you to be able to walk away from this if you need to, right? Um, so here we go. That's there, that's done. Let's go back over to our checklist and see what else we need to do after this, right? So we're gonna use Write with AI to generate a three message campaign for each event. So here's our day zero, day one, day two. So here's a confirmation when they register. Here's a reminder the day before. Here's a reminder the day of. And we'll paste all of the copy for this into our Trello card. Again, I've provided a prompt for you for this. And these are the messages that people are gonna receive from you via email automatically when they sign up for your events, right? So I'm gonna paste that in here. Alright, so right. So I'm gonna say for the event below, because I'm gonna copy everything beneath this. Each email should include a subject line, body copy and a call to action. And we'll put a link to the event there if we have set that up already. Uh, but for now, I'm just gonna go ahead and put event info in here. I'm gonna hit paste. I'm gonna hit write and I'm gonna let it come up with that campaign copy. And once it's done, again, I'm gonna come right back over here to Trello. And I'm going to put it into this card, right? So I'm actually gonna edit this. This is just so I know what it is. This is event description. And let me go and grab what Write with AI just gave me. And come back over here to our Trello board. And I'm gonna call this uh, campaign. Paste. Love it. Save. Great. Alright, cool, right? So this is coming along nicely. This is something we're gonna repeat for all of our events, right? Um, and then we're gonna actually go and set up in Get Oiling. So if we come over here to Get Oiling, real quick, I don't have this done yet, so let's go ahead and do it. We're gonna go to Zoom meetings. And I'm going to, this is actually gonna be my monthly class is what I'm gonna use here. So I'm gonna click get link. And I am going to take this over and just make sure that it's on my Trello board, right? Uh, so I don't lose it. And I don't need to like pop around Get Oiling to try to find it. Alright, so I'll save that. And now we are off to the races. So the next thing we need to do is actually to create our campaign for our event. And remember, we're gonna be doing this one event per month, right? So this event is called cozy home retreat. I'm just gonna be grabbing everything from my Trello board now. That's all I'm doing is I'm gonna take what I have in Trello. I'm going to be pasting it in here, right? So I'm gonna create my campaign. I'm gonna add a message. For now, just to keep things simple, I'm actually gonna use the basic email editor. But uh, you could absolutely uh, utilize the email block builder and maybe have templates for yourself that'll save you boatloads of time, especially if your Zoom link is the same for all of your events, then you know, that's one less thing that you have to worry about. So here, I'm gonna copy my subject line from my Trello board, pop that in right here. I'm gonna grab the body copy that it provided me. I'm going to paste that here. Alright, I'm going to save this. That's my day zero. I'm gonna go ahead and add my next one. Again, this is really simple and straightforward here, right? So here's a reminder email. Um, there is the title. Here is the body. And this is a copy paste job. Really simple, really straightforward. I'm gonna save that. That's our day one. And finally, I'm gonna send our day of reminder. I've got my subject line already in my Trello card. I've got the body copy here in my Trello card. Plain text. There we go. Uh, and then I do need that Zoom link, which I had forgotten to put into the AI. So I'm gonna copy that and join the call. I'm gonna hyperlink this. So select all of the text that we want, insert link, paste that Zoom link. I'm gonna open a new tab and maybe make this a button, right? So let's save that message. Now we've got our message, uh, messages in place here. Now we need to make sure that this is set up correctly, right? So this is gonna be maybe at 7:00 PM Central Time, uh, or actually this needs to go out an hour before. So I'm gonna actually do this at 6:00 PM Central Time for an 8:00 PM event Eastern Time. Um, we can have uh, this go out the morning before. Maybe at 9:00 AM as a reminder. And then we need to apply a date to this. So this event is, again, looking right back over here on my Trello card. It's gonna be on December 10th. That means this needs to apply to contacts on December 9th, or actually 8th, because we're doing a day before. So they're gonna get a day before on the 9th, they'll get a reminder. The day of, they'll get a reminder as well. And this will go out whether they register two weeks before or the day before. So this campaign is now done. We have completed that step of the process. Uh, and then we can go and create our event. This really is, I think, one of the, the uh, slightly more complicated aspects of what we're doing uh, is setting up because the campaign uh, and the event are the things that we're doing. But just so you know, and, and, and as we are kind of referring to what's here, I'm gonna be using this event description that we pasted here earlier. And I don't need that call to action because it's gonna be on the Get Oiling event itself. But I'm gonna use the same setup steps here to come back over here to Get Oiling and uh, and go over to events. And I promise this goes by really quickly if you are sitting down to do this in a dedicated fashion, right? So you are, you've done all the planning, now you're doing all of the publishing. And it really does make things go a lot more quickly. So here, I'm gonna paste in all of these uh, lines of copy. I'm gonna break them apart so that they are a little bit easier to, to read and see. This was again on my Trello card. It's on December 10th. It's at 8:00 PM Eastern, a little bit of a late event admittedly. Um, there we go. Uh, and the name of this is again, from my Trello card, cozy home retreat. Alright, so I am going to go find that campaign. We just created cozy home retreat. There it is. Uh, and I'm gonna go ahead and click add event. Now we could use an image for this event. I would do that in the planning process and attach that image perhaps to the Trello card. But now you can actually go and see that this event is live in your Get Oiling system. Now, once that's the case, I want you to grab the link to this. Come back over to your Trello card. And let's put the event link here. So that we can easily go and find it whenever we need to, when we are promoting, right? So that's there. That's good to go. Now, what we can do is um, actually, that was drafts in progress and it's actually scheduled now. So all of that is there. The event is done. Uh, and then we can move on and do this with all of the other events, right? And so from there, and there's only three per season, so this is pretty simple and straightforward. Uh, from there, we can move on to our blog posts. So creating our blog posts in Get Oiling. Alright, so if we move down here, you can see that we can move the blog cards that we're gonna about to work on, that we are about to work on into drafts in progress. And then we're gonna use Write with AI to generate everything that the blog post needs. I do have an example prompt for you. Uh, we're gonna set those up and schedule them. Uh, so what we'll do here is we'll go over to our blog posts in Get Oiling. We're going to write posts. And then again, using what's on our Trello board, we are gonna get started. So let me actually take us back over to Trello. So we can see what we're gonna start working on next in our long form content is this one here, the simple swaps for a low tox cozy home this winter. And because I'm gonna be doing this in batches, let me go ahead and get the rest of December over here as well. Uh, the one I'm gonna start working on right now is this simple swaps. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna take what it has provided for me here, the title and the description and suggested meta description. I'm gonna paste those into our um, into our right with AI and Get Oiling to help us get started, right? So here I'm going to uh, I'm actually gonna go right here to this right with AI from the editor. And I'm going to go and grab this example prompt. I'm gonna paste this in. Let's drag this down so we can see more of it. And I'm going to go and grab my title. And paste that here where it says title. Alright, so I'm going to also go and grab the rest of the description and the suggested meta description that it gave me. Additional info. Now you are going to wanna make sure that you are um, paying attention to these things. So if you have a lead magnet, you wanna maybe put a link to your um, your landing page that uh, maybe offers your uh, your weekly wellness tips. Let's go ahead and do that actually. Um, just so we've got something complete here. So I'm gonna go over to my landing pages. Cause on our blog post, we want people to um, to be able to, you know, actually become our leads here. So I'm gonna look up my tip Tuesday. I'm gonna click get link. And I'm gonna put that link in right here. There we go. So I'm gonna click write and I'm gonna have it give me a blog post. And this is really exciting. Uh, because this is going to give us the majority of what we want, what we need. Obviously, as you are publishing, it is important um, that you use AI as a starting point. Definitely go through and modify this so that it really sounds like you. Definitely make sure that it is um, correct, right? That the information uh, being shared i- is actually uh, true. Uh, and I'm gonna actually add this to the editor directly. Oh, look at that. It's awesome. Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and grab this here. And that's kind of amazing. It gave it to me in code and it actually formatted it for me directly, which is pretty exciting. Uh, so what I can do here is just uh, you know, make a couple of changes. Again, making sure that things are um, things are, are reading correctly, that they are um, you know, things I actually wanna talk about. So for example, I might not want to talk about candles here, right? I might actually say we should talk about diffusers instead of candles. So that's an example of AI maybe not quite hitting the mark, right? Uh, so that's why it is very important for you to pay attention to what is um, being shared here. Uh, so yeah, this is uh, oh, love it. Here we go. Sign up for weekly wellness tips. Uh, and here it provided my meta description, which I'm gonna copy and come down here and paste into the excerpt field and into the meta description field. It also gave me a, a link path that I'm gonna use right here. And I'm gonna delete those from the blog body there, because they don't belong. I am going to schedule this to publish on December 1st as planned. I'm gonna click schedule post. And we can actually go and view the draft, right? So there's my blog. There's all this great information. It's offering my weekly wellness tips. Take him right there, right? So somebody could see this now, they could see this, or they could see this December 1st. They could also see this December three years from now. And it would still be something that could get people over to sign up for my weekly wellness tips, to follow me, et cetera, right? Uh, so going back to our Trello board, this is essentially a process you're gonna follow for all the blog posts for each week of each month. Uh, you do have a checklist here um, that you You do have a checklist here that you can engage with as you're going through this process. Definitely recommend that that you take a look at these and incorporate these into how you operate for the sake of of brevity here today. I'm just going to go ahead and and mark this one done and move it over to my scheduled and published. But this is essentially the process. And then, once you're ready and you've got your ideas for your social media posts, you're going to be moving those over to your content ideas. Because you know that, you know, you're sort of gathering, here's everything that I'm about to do. And then as you're working on them, you move them here. As they're done, you move them here, right? And that's how we work with this process using the Trello board. And again, it allows you the opportunity to walk away from this when you need to. If you have distractions or you have other things that you need to do. I understand that we don't all necessarily have the luxury of sitting down, spending a four hour time block and having all of our content done for the next three months. It is a worthwhile thing if you can manage to swing it. And I promise you, and you know that everything that needs to be done is is ready to go every month for a whole season. It definitely does bring a great deal of peace of mind. So again, all of this information is here in this in this document. What we can then do is schedule our weekly emails to our list. So here we would move our email cards over to our drafts in progress column. And then based on all of our previous planning, we'll use right with AI to generate a compelling subject line and email body for each email. And then we're again, just going to follow those steps here. So again, just to show you what that looks like. Here, I'll come back over. Here's our Monday, December 4th. Move that over to our content ideas because I haven't done that one yet. I'll move that here. I'm going to work on this one now. I'm going to grab all this information that's here. I'm going to copy this. And I'm going to head back over here to our browser so that we can get moving on the, one of the final steps of this process, which is our email syndication. And then, of course, your social, that's going to be based on whatever platform you are using. So what I'm going to do now is actually just start from my dashboard. And I'm going to go here and filter my contacts for my newsletter tag or leads tag. These could be your weekly wellness tips, folks, if this is how you incorporate this into what you do. I actually think because the majority of us are using weekly wellness tips or a campaign for this purpose. I do want to actually show you how you can make this incorporation here. But real quick, let me just show you if you wanted to like just send a message out once a week that is a newsletter that is not weekly wellness tips, if you're not using weekly wellness tips. I hope that you have a newsletter tag for your contacts. You filter for them. You write that email. And you can actually use one of these if you like as a starting point. Or if you have one that you have saved for yourself, I'm actually going to grab this minimalist one here. And here's information about the post. Here's the event that's coming up, right? And so we've got all of this information here and there's even a Canva template. So if this is something that you would like to use, then you certainly can. So what I'm going to do here is I actually think I want to go into Get Oiling and and just have it write an email for me, just to keep things simple. So I'm going to use right with AI. And I'm going to paste in, there's all of that information that I got from my Trello board. And let me see. There's our blog promotion and then we've got our event. So what we need to do is we need to make sure that we have our blog post link, which I have not. I didn't actually save that to our Trello board. So come back over here to your blog posts. And do make sure that you have, here it is, get link. I'm going to pop that into my Trello board for my blog, just so that that's easy for me to to find in the future. But I am going to also come over here to here, where was I? Right here. I need to put my blog post link here. There we go. And then our event link, which we also have saved on our Trello board. So I'll go ahead and pop that in here. Voila. All right. So I'm going to remove this here. And I'm going to click right. So here's our subject line. We've got our content here. We've got a quick tip, our blog promotion, our event reference. And so all of this we could actually use to come over here and build out an email here in the email builder. We also, of course, could use the basic email editor, use right with AI. And we can grab that copy that it provided us. Get that pasted right in here and then make our modifications. And then schedule this out to go to the audience that we want it to go to when we want it to go out, right? So this gives you all of the options are right here. Everything is, everything that you need to be able to share is here. So I know this is, when we do these quarterly content workshops, they do tend to be a fire hose. And it essentially is because I'm trying to show you how you can execute a system inside of about 45 minutes. When this is a system that truly does take a couple of hours, right? And it's worth it. All of those, you know, even if this takes you four hours for you to be able to say for the next three months, all I got to do is show up. Imagine how much better you show up if you do that. So thank you guys for for sticking around through this. I'm going to go ahead and get into the questions that have been popping up here. And let me see. So the the Trello card, so the Trello board, when I originally made it, it didn't have an events list. And that's a newer addition there. It really did appear to be something that would be important to include. So there aren't checklists on the individual cards, but you're more than able to to actually create those if you wish. So what I would do is if under workshops, you could go maybe from an existing card if you want to use that or I'll create a new one. I'm going to create a new template and this would be workshops. And then in this template card, I can add a checklist of all the things that I know I want to do, right? So if you wanted to do that, you absolutely could. It's not something that we have in place. But if you're following the checklist that we've provided, it walks you through all of the steps that you need to follow anyway. All right, three events next week. Excellent, Annalee. That's a lot of events in a week. Make and take. Awesome. Awesome. Excited to see it. Allison says, I'd love to see you go over how to sign up someone to a blog. Using a landing page is one way and the other is the blog itself. Is there a way to add subscribe to the blog to a scheduled blog post? So the way that you would do this, and I think we actually have a blog funnel training. Essentially, Allison, what you're going to want to do is have a landing page that says, don't want to miss a post? Sign up here, right? And that blog post funnel is essentially going to, on the landing page, they're going to put in their name and email. Use a campaign that has one message that says you're signed up, you're never going to miss an update. I post on these days. Here's what to expect, right? You could use a either the the pop up message or you could redirect to a confirmation page that reiterates the same expectations. There you would have a link to that sign up for the blog funnel, that landing page, wherever you want to share it. And absolutely, that should be maybe in your blog sidebar content. This is something, if you look up our our blog setup and blog branding trainings, we do go into setting that kind of thing up. So, so yeah, the the folks who sign up just for your blog would need to have maybe a special tag. Or maybe that's just, you know, the tag that you use for your newsletter. If you wanted to do that separately from your weekly wellness tips. But if you wanted to incorporate what we're talking about here today into the things that you're sending out with your weekly wellness tips anyway, which I highly recommend, basically, all you're doing is going into the weekly wellness tips that we're providing. And you are inserting a, here's this week's blog post and here's the next event that's coming up, right? And you use right with AI to just kind of tie all the messaging together. All right. Do we have to use the template and not just add a card? So I find it useful, Lisa, if I am actually working through this in in a more deliberate and slow pace and not just trying to make sure that you guys can see all of the things that need to be done. I find the checklists indispensable. And and I'll show you an example of actually how I use this for planning for our own content here. So I use a version of this for what we do. And I have a checklist for everything that I need to do here on the card so that I know that this is ready to go, right? So all of the things that I do to prepare, to publish, I have it all in a checklist. And if I wasn't using the checklist like that, then it's possible that I could forget one part of it, right? So you can use the template cards. And that's, you know, the difference on a Trello board from creating a card and using a template is, you know, you can just click add a card and there's nothing to it. Or you click this little create from template. And then you can use one of the templates that are already there that, of course, are going to populate the checklist that you want to work with. So you could certainly choose to do this however you like. I personally would not do this without the checklist, especially if you're planning that far ahead. Because you run the risk of of missing a step, right? This really is here to kind of have that, that thing to back you up. All right. Not sure if this is addressed. What do we need after email, social posts and blog content is put to publish? Do we archive it? Oh, yeah. No. So please don't archive in Trello. What you're going to want to do is let me come back over to Trello here and come back to this guy. You're just going to want to put it into this scheduled and published. You just, once it's done, you move it over here. The reason why you don't want to archive it is all of this content is refreshable. It's reusable. It's recyclable, right? So if you've done this for six months or a year, you could go and filter for a particular type of content or a label that you've applied to it. And again, that's why it's so important to follow the checklist that are on these cards. Because they're going to make the work that you do for these content sprints usable for you in the future. So that's going to save you time, right? So next October, it might not make sense to do four brand new blog posts. You might refresh two of them and just write two new ones, right? And so if you've archived that that content, then you're not going to be able to easily see where that belongs, right? Or that it's reusable. So please don't archive. Keep it in the list and you can actually filter by searching for words or filtering by the labels to be able to do that. The article that I've been showing, that is on our blog and that I'm going to oh gosh, can I grab that? I'm going to put that right here. There you go. And that's, you're always going to find that in the description on YouTube as well. And we'll send this out as the replay. We send the blog post link as the replay that's got the YouTube video on it. All right, Allison says, we have two active lead magnets, tips and a fall/winter guide with landing pages. Is there a way to adjust the prompt to decide which lead magnet to add to the blog? Yeah, I mean, you could just tell it in the prompt, don't use my usual lead magnet. So if you have your AI settings are being told to always use this lead magnet, just basically say, don't use the normal lead magnet, use this instead. So yeah, you could just adjust the prompt to override that. All right. What about a scheduled blog post? Can you add something for them to do to sign up for blog posts? I mean, yeah, you would put a link to a landing page that would tag them for newsletter or blog post or something like that. And then you would just put that there on the post. Again, I would highly recommend looking at our blog training that like actually teaches how to set up the blog, the blog sidebar, et cetera. That's going to show how to, here, let me just go and we can take a look at the blog. We'll just view it. And you can see here that, you know, she's offering her habit guide right here. But if you go to an individual post down in the footer, and I would recommend just doing this, right? Here's my weekly tips. This, you don't have to put this in every post. We have blog post footers and blog page footers. So if you check out the trainings that we've done on setting up your blog, you'll see all of the sort of nuances and steps that you can follow there to make that work for you. I'm really excited for you guys. Also, congratulations, Allison, you're doing great work. I know you've got your December done, it sounds like. All right. Is there a link for the swipe file for the Trello? Yes, you're going to find that Jennifer in the, actually, in the checklist that we've sent to you. It's on the blog. It's linked on the blog post. So everything that goes out with the replay today is going to have that included. If you wanted to start over from, you know, sort of the beginning, understanding the Trello board and how it works. Let me see. Paula says, I've been sending my twice weekly podcast blast to my blog subscription people too because my podcast episodes are embedded in each of the blog posts. Yes, yes. Your blog is not just about the words that you put there, although those are really the anchors for search and getting traffic to your website. Embedding your content there, if you do YouTube, if you do blog posts, et cetera. You get more opportunities to get exposure to your blog. Because I hope Paula, that in your podcast hosting platform, that you're putting a link to that blog post in your show notes, right? So now you're getting sort of that reciprocal link traffic, right? So it's just a really great, great system that you can take advantage of if you are doing more than just written content. All right. Well, if you don't have December finished, that's okay because it's November 6th. You're doing great. All right. Excellent work, you guys. Thank you for sticking around. I really appreciate you taking this time to take your business seriously, right? Because if you do these things, if you set yourself apart by being a serious person publishing content, you will be perceived differently. People will listen to you. And when it's time for them to look for a solution, they're going to look for that person that they take seriously, right? So congratulations on doing this work. It is worthwhile work. You have a worthwhile message. And we so appreciate you and the opportunity to serve you guys and the good work that you're doing. And we will be back here same time this next week. Have a great week, everybody.